So officially is one on two. Um, as the chair does the sustainability, um, environmental committee, I'm opening the meeting and today I'm pleased to have, CCE, um, here with us to have a community conversation. And the purpose of the meeting is to discuss what is community choice energy? And how as a community, we could learn and what are the next steps to be taking? So therefore I have Samantha Hamilton from the Well Springfield. Thank you to the counselors that are here today, including our city council president. Um, Samantha, the floor is all yours.
Uh, thank you so much, uh, city, city council Perez and for all the other city counselors here today to hear, um, our charge for community trace energy. I like to open the floor by introducing, um, my coalition, my community partners that are working on the projects and residents that are at the table. Um, Liverpool Springfield is a coalition that, um, is funded through, works through the Public Health Institute of Western Mass to address issues in Springfield that can impact the lives and well beings of others. I'm calling the program manager who's been working on this project with our partners over the last uh, two and a half, two and a half years, um, during the pandemic to think about what community policy we can bring forward to an advanced Springfield. So I'm going to pass it to my teammates to introduce themselves and the roles that they play as part of the committee. So I'll pass it to Catherine and then B.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much, um, for having us, uh, councillor Perez and, and, uh, president, uh, Letterman. My name is Catherine Renate. I work at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. I direct our land use and environment department and I am thrilled to be here.
Thank you. B, then Emily.
Hello, everyone. I'm B Dewberry. I'm the community building and engagement manager at Wayfinders and we are Regional Housing CDC. And, um, our role has really been working to, uh, engage residents in, in the process as well as to develop campaigns around the different policies that we are lifting up. And, uh, thank you for having us and I'll pass to Emily.
Emily, then Rusty.
Hi, I'm Emily Tebow, community engagement associate at Wayfinders. Um, thank you so much for having us.
Rusty, then Emma.
Hi, my name is Rusty Pauls Grove. I'm the environmental justice organizer at Arise for Social Justice.
And Emma, then Diane.
Hello, my name is Emma Woods. I'm a Springfield resident and advocate for CCE.
Diane, then Katie.
Good morning, everybody. This is, I'm Diane Jacobs. I am a community, uh, resident. And I'm also a volunteer engagement manager at Dress for Success.
And then Katie and then Sarita.
Thanks Samantha. Uh, thanks for meeting with us. I'm Katie Talbot, uh, the Western Mass leader organizer. And, um, recently took over neighbor neighbor's role, um, on this project here in Springfield.
Sarita.
And I'm Sarita Hudson, Director of Programs and Development at the Public Health Institute of Western Mass. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. And again, so that is our team and I'm so proud of work with these wonderful people from different cities that care about advancing racial, um, advancing health and climate justice in Springfield. So our intention today is to give you an overview of the work that we've done, some of the, um, products that we've created. Have Catherine give us a deep dive in how community choice energy would work for Springfield. Um, pass it to our residents who are the ones that live here and we do also work here and some of us also live here. But the charge of, on why other community residents should be part of this work or should know about the value of community choice energy in Springfield. And we're also open to any questions you might have regarding the process of establishing this for Springfield that we might be able to answer. And if we are able to, we will ask, we have a final charge that would help us advance this work, uh, in the city and, um, throughout the process at city council. Um, so I want to open up, we're just kind of sharing the content, we, one of the contests we've created and explaining what community choice energy is uh, for residents in the broader community. Um, so I'm going to share my screen and then, uh, share our informative video that some summarizes the process, but there's still, um, some missing pieces, but hopefully this helps answer some of the bigger pictures that we wanted to kind of explain the process with you all. So I'm sharing this screen and pressing play.
Every time you use energy to turn on your lights, you directly impact our climate and the health and wellbeing of your family. That's because as a Springfield resident, your energy supplier currently only provides the 20% renewable energy. But we have an opportunity with the flick of a switch to make it 100% clean and renewable now with community choice energy. Community Choice Energy or CCE is a program that allows all of Springfield collectively to require and buy 100% clean renewable energy. Allowing us to combat climate change, advance racial equity and improve our public health. So how do you benefit from CCE? First, you'll be directly combating climate change. By switching to community choice energy, you will no longer be tapping into pollutants like fossil fuels. This will help reduce environmental impacts like tornadoes, ice storms and heat waves. Second, you'll be advancing racial equity because you'll be allowing everyone to help our environment. Everyone will be tapping directly into 100% renewable energy, making it accessible to all. Lastly, you'll improve the public health of future families living in Springfield. Community Choice Energy will allow everyone to switch simultaneously now, taking a direct shortcut to better, cleaner energy for your family's future health. So what can you do? Right now, we need your input and your voice to help us spread the word about community choice energy. Community Choice Energy is possible, but it requires all of us to take a stand together. Visit livewellspringfield.org slash CCE to see what it can do for your community.
Okay. Thank you for that. I hope this, that video kind of gives a broader vision was created with community, uh, residents helping to design and the messaging that looks and reflects the city of Springfield. Um, so this is like the broader overview of the benefits of community choice energy for Springfield. I'm going to pass it to Catherine that's going to present, um, give us a full presentation regarding what community choice energy could look like and the process.
Thanks Samantha. I'm just going to share my screen and, uh, walk you through this, um, presentation. So again, we're talking about community choice energy, but we're talking about green community choice energy. So our coalition, um, this was a nice photo that has, uh, councillor Perez and others. We've been doing this for a long time in collaboration with the city. Um, we've been working since the tornado in 2011 to help Springfield address the climate crisis equitably. The city engaged the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and our collaborators to, uh, facilitate development of Springfield Strong, Healthy and Just, which is a climate justice plan, the Climate Action Resilience Plan, and that was completed in 2016 or published. Um, our coalition led Springfield's municipal vulnerability preparedness planning process and has assisted the city in securing millions of dollars for implementation. And as Samantha explained, we have also secured, um, $600,000 for implementation plus another couple hundred thousand for the planning from the Kresge Foundation's Climate Change Health Equity Initiative called the Chi Initiative. And we are one of just 16 cities across the country that is participating in this collaborative. Um, advancing green community choice energy is simply the next logical step forward in this collaborative work that we have been doing. So who are we? You've met all of us. We are Springfield residents for the most part, but of course we all work here. Um, and the rise for social justice, neighbor to neighbor, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, the Public Health Institute of Western Mass and Wayfinders. So community choice aggregation, community choice energy. Um, I want to quickly talk about going basic community choice energy to green because it's an important part of this focus, which is on climate justice and advancing, um, racial equity and improving public health. Um, municipal aggregation was enabled in Massachusetts a long time ago in 1997. And, and that means it was made possible for cities to make this switch, but very few cities took advantage of it. Um, for those of you who may be knowledgeable, a whole bunch of communities on the Cape, the Cape Light Compact came together and have been doing this, but they're, they were kind of off by themselves for a long time. And then, um, um, in addition to enabling just basic community choice energy or aggregation, the, um, aggregation also has, um, was initially taken to stabilize or reduce the cost of electricity for customers. But then it was enhanced to allow green municipal aggregation. And for the green municipal aggregation, you have a default option that includes 5% more than the basic, um, renewable portfolio standard. And it empowers cities and towns to take action on the climate crisis, which again is what we're talking about today. Um, the basic process is, uh, well, we're going to get to the end, but the, the process of switching is after the council has authorized the city to do it and the, the city staff have moved forward and hired an aggregator. Um, it's an opt out option. So once the city decides to do it, all residential and small business customers will be opted in. And you'll have to opt out. So for the people, you know, so it's the, the whole, the idea is that it's easier to do the good thing than the bad thing. So that's, we're happy with how the program was designed. Um, so who is doing, um, community choice energy right now? This is, we're going to get, there's some numbers later, but this was in 2019. You can see it's happening all over, but there's kind of a hole right where we're located. Um, West Springfield is doing it, but, um, not very many other, um, cities and towns in our region. Um, and then in terms of who's doing it green, this is, this is an important thing that we'll, we can talk about in more detail later, but just to kick it, to get to the, give you the basic knowledge. You can see there, the, um, the green is green. So it, for the municipal aggregation that is happening in our region in Western Mass, not very much of it is green. So it's fine that they're doing aggregation, but they're not accelerating the transition to clean, safe, sustainable energy or taking action on the climate crisis. They're saving customers money, which is of course important, but what we have the option to do is to do both. Um, and so how does community choice energy pressure the market to grow more clean energy? What happens? Um, there's clean energy that, you know, exists. There are solar, um, panels, there are wind farms, there are large, there are people who are, there are entities that are actually generating clean, safe, sustainable energy. But the way that, um, the, the United States and Massachusetts, we value both the energy and we value the fact that it's clean energy. So you get paid twice if you have clean energy. You get paid because you generated energy and then you get extra pay because you generated clean energy. And that's because we have the renewable portfolio standard which commits us to an ever increasing amount of clean energy. So the cool thing about community choice energy that requires green energy is it grabs the renewable energy credits from that installation. And so the investor owned utilities are required to, um, have an ever increasing amount of clean energy that they, that they purchase. So if we grab the existing clean energy through community choice energy, that forces them to, um, get more, more renewable energy. So that's how we're influencing, influencing the whole market by our actions. But, and, and in addition, green community choice energy does save, um, consumers money. The, it from 2019, the programs that existed saved their ratepayers over $8 million. And then just to touch on, what about those aggregators who call people all the time? They're not offering clean energy. They're just making money by getting, getting new customers. And when, um, Attorney General Mara Healy did a study, they cost consumers over $253 million over a three-year period. So that's why we need to, we need to protect residents from those, um, money-making, um, greedy aggregators who are not helping with the transition to clean energy. In addition, um, there's a racial justice component of this work. Um, as I've suggested, the individual residential customers and small businesses have been unable to find a really beneficial aggregation because the aggregators are, you know, making tons of money off the larger, the larger entities that are using large amounts of energy. And so again, Attorney General Healy has been analyzing how these aggregators have been affecting people of color in the Commonwealth and they have found that the aggregators have been, um, disproportionately harming low income residents and communities of color. So, um, of the 500 residents that, um, receive their electricity directly from a competitive supplier, they're concentrated in the gateway cities, including Springfield. And again, low income households have lost an average of $166, you know, over the, by participating in these, um, not community choice energy aggregation programs, but by participating in these for-profit aggregation programs. So as, um, as many of you, I believe already know, um, the city council, you are the key, the key role, uh, the, the first important actor in this whole process. I mean, obviously we've been very important up to this point in terms of educating residents about what community choice energy is, building a groundswell of support. Actually not building the groundswell of support, harnessing the groundswell of support that it, that residents are feeling and have been feeling, um, and expressing since the tornado and the disparate, uh, impacts that in terms of the response, um, and recovery from the tornado. So again, we are looking for the city council to authorize aggregation because that's what has to happen the first step. Um, and then the next steps that will happen after that is the city will hire and, you know, do a process to figure out and eventually procure, hire an energy broker. There are pre-procured brokers approved by the Commonwealth, um, so that it can be a very expedited procurement process. Um, then once the city has engaged a broker focusing on green municipal aggregation as we're recommending, um, then they create an aggregation plan with a very robust public review process, public engagement development process, informing the community about what's happening. Again, we've already done a ton of that legwork. Um, and then it has to go to the Department of Public Utilities for review. For those of you who read the Boston Globe, you probably saw the article last week, how the Boston, uh, they reported that the Department of Public Utilities has been sitting on, um, a lot of these proposals that have come from cities. And, um, there's some legislative movement to try to, you know, shake them, them out of the Department of Public Utilities, but that's another issue for, for advocacy. Um, and then once it gets approved by the Department of Public Utilities, we start procuring electricity, um, that's 100% clean. If that's, we anticipate there being a range of options, 100% renewable, um, the basic rate and then something in between. Um, and then we monitor participation. Um, anticipating that people may still say, really? Are you, will it really? It, it, will it cost more? Cause it sounds too good to be true. Um, and of course we don't know, we can't predict the future, but so we can, all we can talk about is what we've learned from the past. But every study that has been done by the Attorney General's Office, by the, uh, the Green Consumer Energy Alliance shows that, um, over the long term, um, residents are saving money through, um, these, these green municipal aggregation projects, not the, you know, the greedy for-profit aggregators, but through, um, community choice energy, residents are saving money over the long term. And, um, the, this, the, the note to make, um, much of this content of this, um, PowerPoint comes from the, um, Green Consumer Energy Alliance. The, because the investor owned utilities are ordered by the Department of Public Utilities, when to make their procurements, um, they have narrow window, windows to set prices. But community choice energy has, doesn't, isn't controlled by that, isn't directed by, um, the law to do that. So they're able to, um, uh, you know, set prices with a lot more flexibility, which is why, um, analysts think the, um, green community choice energy has not, um, increased costs for residents. Excuse me. Oh, I already talked about that. I, I jumped the gun. So again, um, green municipal aggregation is able to save people money because the utilities are not, are required to procure power in the six month increment, increments. But the community choice energy has more flexibility. Um, this, I, I added this slide in. I said it's for the nerds and the wonks. And I figure many of you city counselors consider yourselves policy nerds and policy wonks. Um, but and, and I'm, I'll share this so you can dive into it with more detail, but back in 1997, um, the Electric Restructuring Act, investor owned utilities, in our case, it's Eversource, um, were required to sell off the generation ass, assets and operate solely as the distribution. So that's another thing to tell, you know, that we would obviously tell residents when we, when we make this switch that Eversource is still going to be the distributor. So like, if the power goes out, Eversource still has all their crews to go and fix the wires. The aggregator is not the one who has to go do that. That's still Eversource's responsibility. Um, and so back in 97, that's, that's, you know, uh, consumers were given the opportunity to choose a competitive electricity supplier. And that's, um, what opened up the opportunity for, um, community choice energy. Um, and again, uh, just more details for, for the, for the nerds and the wonks. Um, the municipal aggregation is this new third alternative and, um, it restores transparency and consumer protection to the energy purchasing process by offering a well-vetted program and the ability to opt out at any time. So we need you. Um, you're the, you're the most important players right now in this process. We need you to authorize it. Um, I forgot to put in, I, I had a question mark. I was going to put in people's last names. I apologize Diane and Emma. Um, so, uh, you already met us all, but, um, feel free to reach out to us. We'll send you, I think you might, you, um, councillor Perez has our contact information, but we are eager to talk with you anytime, one-on-one, um, any questions that you have. We are, um, eager to address them and, and, and help you to make the decision as soon as possible to authorize this so that Springfield can join the club of communities that are, um, saving their residents money, taking action to address the climate crisis, advancing racial equity and improving public health.
Thank you, Catherine. And additionally, on our website and our Live Well Springfield website, we have all this information. We also created a one-page or fact sheets for, uh, residents and city officials like yourself to kind of get the high level details, um, about how, what is the process? Why is it important for our community and the benefits, um, that it can have overall? So thank you Catherine for the, the deep dive in the logistics of why it's important, the value to community, the momentum towards, um, um, being more green in our city and filling that gap on the map where nothing is, is happening regarding clean energy. Um, so our other intention is to, um, get folks like residents to kind of share their, their why and also open it to any partners that might want to, um, uh, take a minute to champion why this is important. Um, but our work has been going on for the last two and a half years, right before the, the pandemic, pandemic started and we pivoted to, um, we pivoted to virtual engagement. Um, so I just wanted to pass it to one of our residents to kind of, um, share their charge and pass it to Emma. And then I'll also recognize, um, city councillor Tracy Whitfield for, uh, with her hands up for a question. Emma, you have the floor for a minute.
Yes. Hello, everyone. Again. You know, I, when I came back to Springfield, I, I noticed a lot of things were a little change, you know, being a lifelong residence here. But, um, I noticed a lot of different family members having either COPD or asthma or some kind of health with their respiratory. Um, I can remember back in the seventies or eighties that we had this fuel burning over there, I think on Walnut Street, somewhere in the corner of Walnut, down the, down at the bottom. I'm not sure right now, but, um, uh, it, 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 when I first came in as a volunteer from Arise, I didn't really understand what this was all about, but as I dived in and started being a better listener, um, it, it makes more sense. You know, to me, and, um, as I continue on with, um, CCE, I began to talk to other people about it. And as much as I know more about it, the more I can communicate it to others. And I was able to bring on some people that might've been interested too, because asthma is big. When I was working in the public school, it's almost 70% of our children has asthma. You know, so, um, it's very parrotive that we actually, you know, take a look at this. And, and it's worth the while because I've been in it for the hall, the long haul and I'm still, I'm still here. And I just thank you guys for being here to hear us because this is very important, that not just for me and my family, for all of our family. And with that, um, I brought on Diane and where she was like, nah, but then she came around and she listened and she was more, because it means all of us. It's not an individual journey. It's, it's all of us together. So that's where I'm at and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you. Um, recognize, uh, city councillor Tracy Whitfield and, and then also councilman Victor.
All right. I'm trying to figure out how to speak on this phone. Um, but my question is, what would the cost to the city be, um, with this transition?
The, there, there's no direct upfront cost, like, um, there's no like fee that you have to apply. Um, the, I've spoken with a couple of the cities that have advanced aggregation, community, green, community choice energy. And, um, you know, they approximate maybe, um, five to 10 hours of staff time during the process when you're, um, procuring or selecting your aggregator. Uh, so maybe five to 10 hours a week or at the most, you know, to, to get the aggregator in place and to, to, to do the outreach. Um, and, um, engagement, obviously more would be better, but we've got the Live Well Springfield Coalition to assist. And then once you move into the aggregation and you have the program up and running, then it's, um, you know, that aggregator is, um, is running it and, and they're, what, what you are able to do is there's an adder. So when you set the prices, you have a little tiny adder that covers the cost of the aggregator. So the city isn't paying the aggregator. The aggregator, you know, is making money in this process, obviously to cover their expenses as a business. So there is no, um, budget line that the city has to put in, but they do have to assign some staff to work on the project. And it's, yeah, so that's the estimate of staff time.
Okay. So there's no conversion cost or anything like that.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you. I think you guys, I stopped going to the meetings a while ago and you guys have done a great job. Um, continuing the process. I'm so proud that we're here today. Um, and I'm, I'm interested in to keep learning more about it and, and see how we can support or how I can support. I have to speak for myself. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Whitfield. Also I'm recognizing councillor Victor Davila as part of the conversation that we have today. Thank you so much.
Thank you councillor Perez.
Uh, ma- madam chair.
Oh, also I have to recognize a councillor Hurst is also is part of the conversation. Thank you. Yes, councillor Letterman.
Madam chair, I know councillor Davila is next in the, um, in the queue. I just wanted to add a, one thing to what Catherine had said, because I think it's an important, uh, fact relative to the cost, uh, which is always a concern for us. But that, uh, adder that she mentioned after the fact, that helps pay for the aggregator in the long term, that is a fee that people already pay now. Uh, it is just in fact paid to Eversource. So it wouldn't be an additional fee on, on any ratepayers. They are already covering that cost, but right now it's being, it's going to Eversource because they are in essence our aggregator by default. So it's just switching it over, uh, to the new individual.
Thank you for the information. I know councillor Davila has some questions.
Thank you, uh, councillor Perez and good afternoon to everybody. It's, uh, good to be here, uh, and a good presentation Samantha. Uh, I really enjoyed that also. Uh, Catherine, uh, thank you for the, the level of details. Um, I have to say that as you guys were talking, what you're thinking of was the, uh, forty something million dollars that we were able to get back from Eversource that they were in taxes, they were stiffing us from, uh, and I have to recognize that it was, uh, largely not all due to councillor Fenton and councillor Tim Allen, who's here on the line with us today. Uh, so kudos to you guys for that. And so my, my question is, I do have a few questions. I found it a fantastic presentation. They also go talk about They also go talk about. Cost and I know that there's, there will not basically, there will be no commercial cost to the, to the city. And the other fee for the aggregators were being paid, but can you tell me? If you know, what will the material average savings will be for the resident in the city of Springfield? Or the expected savings?
I can't tell you that. Um, uh, uh, all, again, I, I will share the reports of past savings, so. You know, as I, as I mentioned in the presentation, some of the programs that have been analyzed over. A three-year period, on average, they saved a hundred and sixty-six dollars over the year. So it's a, it's a, you know, what that, what is that? It's about ten dollars or fif- you know. Twelve, thirteen dollars a month or something like that in your, in your um, energy bill. So it could be a small. Uh, a financial savings, but obviously if you factor in, you know, moving from. Uh, twenty percent renewable energy to a hundred percent renewable energy with the flick of a switch. Our savings in terms of our health and, you know, environmental degradation and the climate crisis are massive.
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll add to, and I'll add to that is the consideration is price stability. And that's the opportunity that we're putting forward in, in switching um, to community trace energy. As we know, as we go into our winter season now with higher rates for a gas bill. And we are a four-year season community that goes from um, from heat um, to, to gas or some other form of. To heat our home or to cool our, our, our house, um, to kind of just take one of these big bucket bills that are really taking um. Um, impacting people's lives financially in this financial crisis. It might be something we're offering without the forecasting of the future, knowing that it will save everyone money.
Of course, and, and you, you guys are saying magic words to me. You say price stability, which is great. You guys say. Uh, a past, but to, past saving of all ten, thirteen dollars a month, the way I look at it, that's, uh, listen, that's prescription money. You know, that's uh, milk, that's uh, bread, you know, uh, so, uh, those are words to my ears. Uh, and particularly here in the city of Springfield, where I keep saying we have a lot of single women. Uh, single moms, uh, and it's uh, it's a problem, you know, it's uh. This sounds like a colleague chair, but there's definitely two cities in the, in the, in the realm. And so, uh, anyway, so. Tell, tell me a little about, about the opt-out program. What would that look like? If average Joe says, no, I want to stay with Eversource. How do they opt out?
All they have to do when the, um, so the city would be obliged to send a, a communication to every household saying. Um, you have the option to opt out and in that postcard or that email or that communication, probably all of the above, it would say. You know, call this number, send an email to this address, uh, respond. It would, it would be very, it would just be, I want to keep what I've got. And it would be one click and then those households would not be included in the aggregation.
I understand. Now, in terms of the uh, um. You say that for the city council to authorize this, uh, what would that look like? Uh, maybe one of my colleagues can apply on this. Would that look like as a form of an ordinance, as a form of order? What's, what's the ask?
Council president Letterman.
Um, thank you. Thank you, Catherine. Um, it's a, it's probably the most important question of the day. Uh, so, so we have been uh, looking at this councillor Davila, uh, relative to what steps we would need to take at this time. Uh, it looks like uh, it would be in the form of an order, uh, essentially allow for the city council to authorize the administration. To move forward with such a plan. Um, it is in a very key piece to this to understand that our role as the legislative body. Would simply be to allow the authorization for this to occur, but there is a, a significant, very much significant role. Um, for the mayor and the administration after that fact. And so, once we uh, place the order on the agenda and we, if, if we in fact vote affirmatively uh, to authorize the administration. It then lays on the administration, uh, that they must move forward with contracting an aggregator. Uh, having that aggregator move forward with the process of bringing a proposal forward, handling all of the outreach that Catherine referred to. Uh, and then ultimately it is on the mayor uh, to sign that plan. Uh, so our role is really very much in the beginning and then after that fact, if we so choose, would be also to advocate. Uh, you know, in favor of the mayor doing so. So that is an order that um, I am hopeful to bring forward before the end of the year. But it would ve- it would very much be the beginning of the process, um, as opposed to the installation occurring.
Thank you, councillor Letterman. Councillor Perez, we indulge me one more minute for two more questions. Uh, but. So uh, councillor President Letterman, have we reached out to the mayor yet? On this issue?
So I have not personally reached out to the mayor, but I think that'd be a good question for the advocacy group.
Yeah, exactly.
And, and it would, we would say we have intentions to, to reach out to the mayor currently, talking to a city council staff. To give us an understanding of the landscape of pushing this forward to the mayor iteration. So we've been working with city, um, city government as well.
Good, I understand, I understand. Uh, excellent. And so my final question is. Uh, in regards to the RFP. Um, I know the city will have to put it out, or do we have a timetable, suggest a timetable or? That will be entirely up to the city how we do this.
Again, my understanding is the city could procure that they've pre-approved vendors and so. The city would not necessarily have to do competitive procurement, so they, they could just select one of the approved vendors.
Right. And how do we verify that, that we are the, are getting clean energy? That we are not being offered a good lollipop when that we're fossil.
That's when you, when this, when the city works with the aggregator just requires it. And, and I guess that was going to be my question to you, um, council president Letterman. Can the city council authorize only green? Community choice aggregation and, and not allow the city to do non-green? Is that, is that possible?
We cannot. The, the authorization is simply for community choice energy aggregation as, as it is established in law, right? So the, the concept of the green aspect is more so um, a commitment that the administration would need to make. Now, what we could do certainly um, is, you know, in our uh, passage of it, encourage the administration, perhaps accompany it. A resolution, but this is where I think the advocacy from the community to say, listen, we want the options to exist. Um, for us to be able to access it at that level. Um, it would be very important to continue and why I think it is so valuable. Um, that your organization and coalition has the funding to continue that advocacy going forward. The other piece to that to recognize, um, and, and perhaps to speak a little more to councillor Davila's question about making sure that we in fact are. Um, getting uh, actually influencing the market, uh, is, is the existence of uh, renewable energy credits. And so when you, when you aggregate councillor Davila, uh, specifically for renewable energy, what you are actually doing is having your aggregator. Purchase renewable energy credits, which are a regulated um, aspect of the Commonwealth. And so only a certain number of those exists. Each of those is tied to a renewable energy project. And it is publicly available that you would be purchasing those. So, once they are purchased, that's your verification. Uh, that it is in fact supporting a project in the future or a current project.
Excellent. Uh, thank you, uh, madam chair, for, for allowing me to time. I have to say that uh, I find it fascinating. I, I look forward to learn more. Uh, and uh, please, uh, the next meeting, definitely, uh, Lubin, I would love to, to attend and. Cause I think there's some fossil market in my head. I think the average Springfield residents pays about twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars. Um, in electricity and so, uh, you know, it is an issue. And don't even get me going about the housing, but um, or heat for that matter. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you. Before I recognize uh, councillor Hurst and give the floor, I want to recognize um, councillor Goban here. Thank you um, for attending the meeting. Uh, councillor Hurst, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Uh, I heard savings in the long run and then I, I also just heard a hundred and sixty-six. Dollars on average per month? Is that or per year? And is that in the first year that you estimate based off of previous studies?
Yeah, it was per year and it was a, a report that was done on a, a three-year analysis showed over those three years. The average was a hundred and sixty-six dollars a year. So I would not predict anything at this time because we didn't have a war. Um. When, you know, when this research was done before, um, and we didn't ha- we hadn't just had a, a, the COVID pandemic. So I, I think the future is uncertain, but all, all we know from the past is in the past, um, it saved people money.
Is there a chance that it could go up? And I, I understand the, you know, the idea that, you know, we'll cer- certainly be um. Using more clean energy, which is ultimately good for the entire city. I just, you know, I guess. One of the concerns that I would have is if we had to sell folks on it going up. And, you know, at the outset, uh, which, which still might be viable, um, and worthwhile. I just, I just wonder if that is an option, if that is a possibility.
Um, the, when you work with your aggregator, you can set um, alternative rates for your residents. So most of the programs in the Commonwealth right now will have the ones that are green. They have a hundred percent green rate that may be a little bit more expensive. And then they have maybe a middle rate that's between, you know, like, let's say it's fifty percent. And then they have the base rate. And they set the base rate to be consistent with what you would be getting from Eversource. So most ag- so again. We can't say the future, but we can say in the past, the prices have not gotten up, gone up. Certainly, everybody's concern is I'm going to be the one who locks us into a deal and then people are paying more than they would have been paying. So everybody's afraid of that. But so far, that reality has not come true in Massachusetts, um, in community choice aggregation.
Is that at the base rate or is that at sort of the middle rate that you say, or is that at the hundred percent rate?
We, we've said. That's, that's in the analysis of the programs overall. So it's a cumulative rate and I will, I will share the reports with you. Um, with, um, yeah, so you can, you can pour through them. There's, there's lots of research into this.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question, councillor Hurst?
Uh, no, ma'am. Thank you, madam chair.
You're welcome. Um, councillor Goban and then Rusty from Arise. The floor is your councillor Goban.
Thank you so much and, and thank you very much for that presentation, Catherine. It's really good to see you. And I'm so glad to see that everyone is working together to continue to improve our, our city. So one of the questions that I had and I wasn't, I'm not sure if you shared this, I was traveling and then I was, got locked out. So um, I did, don't know if I heard, but the energy um, efficiency piece of it is going to be. The way that the energy is produced. Is that going to be solar, hydro, or what is it? Oh, we don't know yet.
We don't know yet. It will be um, it, one, once the city decides to do it and, and then the aggregator, once. The city, the whole outreach programs, let's assume that, you know, the city decides to go with a hundred percent, the fifty and the base rate. Then the aggregator will go see what's available. And again, um, I think councillor president Letterman was starting to get into the complexity of it. If, if we could get Massachusetts solar. Um, then we would get the solar generated here and we would get the renewable energy credits here. So. Um, up, not obviously, but one would hope to have. Clean energy generated in Massachusetts locally, so we're getting all the benefits. But it, it could also be, you know, that there's a giant wind farm. Um, in Quebec that, you know, it's going into the ISO New England and we're like, you know, we're going to get that. So. Um, but those are the particulars. When you, when you design the aggregation program, that you can actually spell out when, when you're going out to pick your aggregator. And I forgot to mention that there is a group of communities, Northampton, Amherst and Pelham. Have been working on green community choice aggregation for a number of years. And um, they're much farther along. They've hired their aggregator. They're doing their engagement right now. So I have all their materials too, so I can share with you what those things look like and, um, and I can. You can speak to Stephanie Chicorello, the sustainability director in Amherst, um, if you want to have, you know, firsthand experience.
Okay, and do you, off the top of your head, know what they're leaning towards? Is it solar or hydro or wind?
The, you, I don't, nobody really sets the, the source. They just say, I want a hundred percent renewable. And if it's coming, wherever it comes from is where you're getting it from. Uh, I mean, if you say you want Massachusetts specific. You know, then you're more likely to get um, hydro and solar, because we don't have a lot of wind energy, but. Um, all the programs that I've researched, that nobody's getting that to that level of specificity.
Okay, okay. And one last question, um, regarding the savings on the board, the potential savings. Um, I know that I, I put solar panels on my house and I saw uh, savings of like almost. A hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty dollars a month. Um, and. You know, saving a hundred and sixty dollars a year doesn't sound like it's a lot. It is a savings, which is great. Um, but at the risk possibly of it going up, I don't think it would, considering, you know, um. The, the energy efficiency of it, but I'm just wondering and hoping that if, if and when we do get to that point. We can advocate for um, bigger savings for our, our, our residents, because you know, everything is going up. I just got a complaint from one of our constituents that they got their tax bill and their taxes went up. You know, so um, everything is going up and just figuring out a way. Eventually, when we get there, when we can get the most savings, um, and the most energy efficiency. So thank you for, for the presentation on Sam and Catherine and the whole team. Thank you. And thank you, um, madam chair.
Thank you. Um, Rusty from Arise, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, yeah, I think, um. I'm not going to speak about the numbers and the statistics and stuff, because I think Catherine has done a really great job covering all of that. But I do want to speak briefly just on like environmental justice in Springfield. I feel like the recent narrative that we've had in like, you know, the past decade, we've been really on the defense within environmental justice. It feels like we're always trying to stop these like really bad projects like biomass. And you know, right now we've got pipeline stuff going on. Uh, and I just want to highlight that this is a really great opportunity. For the city to be proactive and to flip the narrative from like, oh, we need to protect ourselves to like, oh. We're out here fighting for ourselves and providing like this better future for ourselves. Um, and so I just wanted to highlight that about the project where it really could be a big shift for the city. In terms of like advocacy and really making life better for residents.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so Catherine, where do we go next? Yes, I hear you guys have a petition now in the community already. Could you elaborate about the petition, please?
Um, I'll, I'll let Samantha talk about the petition, but again, for the city council, you know, as councillor president Letterman said, the city council can act. Um, you know, it's, it's on your timeline. So that's again, what we're hoping to have happen. We, we are simultaneously and will continue to do so, are listening to residents about what they want and. And I'll, you know, I'll let Samantha talk about the petition.
Yes, thank Kat. I want to uh, recognize being also if Diane wanted to share her, her passions for being at the table, um, after, after I speak. But yeah, our charge is to, one, I get city council to push forward through a vote. That's a, a champion win for us. And second is to continue engage and educate community residents about community choice energy and environmental justice issues impacting us. Um, so we do have a petition. I can drop it in the box, in the chat box. And I also can share it out with the city, the city councillors um, directly. Um, um, or with you, um, city councillor Perez, so that you can share it with, with the whole team. Um, just um, having residents sign up for what we're just asking for today, for community choice energy with the options to. Opt out and it's up to a hundred percent renewable. And then we'll have these informative videos that continue to explain what a complex issue this is. You know, we had so many questions about how does this really work to residents and then our video does that in our fact sheet. So our intention is to educate, inform and advocate. I'm a path to be and then Diane, if they have any um, thing to share.
And so actually, Sam, you touched on what, what I was going to touch on was just really um, resident response. Um, this process we started a few years ago, as Sam and Catherine has mentioned, and you know. We started really with um, narrowing down to policies that residents felt were priorities. And so I think that's really important to note that, that, you know, after uh, a lot of education and outreach. Uh, we had residents give feedback that said, community choice energy is a policy we'd like to advance. So, you know. Uh, you know, these are your constituents. We know those are who you're responsive to. So it's really important to understand their role in. In advancing this, this is. in advancing this. This isn't just the effort of stakeholders saying this is important for the city of Springfield, but it really is the voice of folks we've met within community conversations. We've done, uh, webinars, uh, wayfinders. We do, um, engagement opportunities called Flex, Flexing Your Civic Muscle. Um, so we've had a lot, lots of opportunities to engage residents around this, educate and inform. And I, and I know Diane can speak as a resident, um, on what motivated her, but I'd like you to also consider that as you make your decision.
Diane?
Um, I was brought on, it's been a year, almost a year and a half now that I've come on in being a resident of the city and also having asthma throughout my entire family. Uh, we have children born with asthma, and to find out that we have such a high rate um, of asthma in the city of Springfield, it was a no-brainer for me to try and come on and participate and see what it is that I can do, um, to help, you know, and help to inform the community. So I'm more or less here to try and advocate for everyone in the city of Springfield and let them know about, you know, what we are doing and how helpful it will be.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you, City Councilor Perez and, uh, all the other city councillors for having us have space to bring this forward to you. Our intention is if you want us to come back to keep you informed or abreast of our progress and reaching out to the community. Um, and we will also be looking forward to hearing if there's any order, um, orders that are going to be placed in pushing this forward. So thank you so much for having us.
Um, Council President Letterman, any other thing that you want to, um, aggregate to today's meeting?
Uh, thank you so much, Madam Chair. I, I think I would start by saying, uh, thank you to the coalition. Um, what an incredible presentation, uh, the information and the tactics in which you, uh, utilize to bring that forward. I, I have to say honestly, I don't think I've ever seen it done, uh, better, especially uh, in this virtual setting. So thank you, uh, for the advocacy that you are already doing. This is, uh, certainly an issue that I think the city council has been looking at, pondering for some time. I remember we convened, um, a meeting just before the pandemic, um, prior to, I think, uh, your funding coming through, uh, for the coalition to begin the conversation. And, um, there was interest at that time, and I think that there is very much interest now. I think the key, uh, to look at this from the perspective of two angles. Uh, number one, uh, is the environmental angle, which certainly, uh, we know cities like Springfield and our city of Springfield are the ones that are most impacted uh, by the continued use of fossil fuels, uh, for energy production. And we have a special stakeholder interest, uh, in advancing renewable energy development uh, in our Commonwealth and across our country, because if we do not, uh, it is our communities that will continue uh, to suffer the public health and environmental impacts the worst. I think the next piece is looking at the volatility of the energy market, and we know that that is especially apparent now. Uh, I do not believe that that volatility is going to improve in the future. I think it will become more volatile. And the fact that community choice energy aggregation allows us to prioritize rate stabilization, um, that's the key. I, I think it's very important that we don't promise that this lowers rates, um, because I, I don't think that uh, necessarily you will see significantly lower rates, but what I think you can see and what the studies show is more stable rates, and also the importance of stressing, uh, that it is not a permanent option. Um, cities like Worcester and Boston that have now advanced community choice energy aggregation have a page right on their website where residents can pop on, and they can actually compare, uh, the existing rate that the energy supplier, uh, such as Eversource, uh, or whatever is the local supplier is providing to their, um, community choice energy aggregation and, and opt right in or out at any point. So what we're really talking about doing is giving residents the power back, giving residents the options that they deserve and protecting them from predatory aggregators. So I believe that it is a no-brainer that we should advance the authorization and then ensure, uh, working together with the community, uh, that the administration puts together a plan with a reputable aggregator to be a strong option for Springfield residents. Um, and so I will look forward to working together with you, Madam Chair, as Chair of the Sustainability Environment Committee, uh, to our colleague, uh, Chair of Maintenance and Development, Council of Goban, and any other colleague, um, that is prepared to advance this. And we certainly will want to continue to make sure that all of our colleagues are educated on this issue, and I would encourage the coalition to reach out to those who may not have been able to be here today, uh, to share that very excellent presentation. And we will, uh, certainly keep you in the loop on the process on our end, keep us in the loop on the process on your end as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, I just want to say before closing, um, that I have been delighted working in a couple of weeks with, with, with the team. I would, I'm looking forward to share of the Environmental Sustainability Committee to continue working. Um, I think we've got a lot of work ahead. Um, and, um, keep me included in your meetings as well as being the chair. And hopefully we will have another meeting of where are we going to continue with this process? I think that, uh, I thank every one of you guys, um, seeing that picture from two thousand eleven, um, and, and, and it reminds me that we've been working towards this goal. And it is passed through. Thank you, thank you to the team so much. Um, I don't have, um, unentertaining emotion at this point, time to close the meeting. I'm looking forward to see you, um, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you for having us.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good day. Have a good day, everyone.